Those who have ideas, questions, complaints, solutions. Thank you for being in Rapid City. I'm asking tonight that you would know us and guide us. Please grant favor to all involved in directing the conversations, agreements, and conflicts on which our city government deliberates. May peace occur at this local level and grow beyond our area and to our neighbors and beyond to their neighbors. Give us patience and clarity that we may get along with one another in love. I pray these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
... One nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Now it's time to adopt the agenda. This is where the council may adopt the agenda as written or make certain modifications to it. Would there be a motion?
Motion by Lehman.
Motion by Lehman to adopt the agenda and a second by Armstrong. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Motion carries. First up on the city council agenda tonight, number one, we have Roger Gallimore, the executive director of the YMCA, who would like to address the city council.
Thank you, Mayor, city council members. What a privilege it is to be here with you tonight. I'm not here asking for anything. Take care of that right away. Actually, I'm here tonight for no other reason than to say thank you. You know, I have a deep appreciation for each one of you and the leadership that you bring to our community. I'm here tonight to thank you as well as thank all those who served in your roles in the city government roles for the last 45 years. As after 45 years, I am retiring. So I'm leaving the post as director of the YMCA. And so it's hard to say, you know, it's hard to let that number just roll off, 45. I used to look at that and think, how in the world does a person do that? And now I look at it and say, where in the world did the time go? But as we do reach this time, I think thank yous are in order. I want to thank you for the confidence that you've placed in the YMCA's ability to do good in the community. You demonstrated that in very real ways. You demonstrated that with what was then called the 2012 Fund back in 92 to support the Rapid City Gymnasium. You did that with the Vision Fund, supporting the Rapid City Education Center. You did that through the Community Development Block Grant, supporting what was then the Star Village Outreach Center, as well as, most recently, the One Heart Project. So those are very real demonstrations of confidence, and it's not lost on me that this is a vote of confidence for which I deeply, deeply appreciate. I want to thank, say thank you to all the staff and elected officials who at one time or another have served on the Y Board or in different Y campaigns. I want to thank you to the staff for helping us to navigate our way through building projects, through licensing, through programs. There were certainly a lot of that over the last several decades. Above all, I want to thank you for the friendships that were formed, the open lines of communication that we enjoyed, and the belief that the task of building our community really does fall on all of us. One of the things that I'm so very proud of in our community is how organizations and government entities come alongside one another to do, again, something good for all. This is such an important part of how we survive as a community, so thank you. After 45 years in the Y, I have a lot of people to thank. I could not be any more blessed than to be able to work side by side with partners, volunteers, donors, and staff from when the Y operated as a small, one-level building there on Kansas City Street, I don't know if anybody remembers that, to today where the Y serves over 25,000 different people in 28 program locations through our downtown campus, branches in Custer and Edgemont, 54-acre day camp, and school buildings and churches throughout the community. So please accept my deepest gratitude to you and your forbears for the great joy you have contributed to me, along with the great satisfaction of what we have all accomplished together. As for May 1st, that's when my wife and I will take on a six-month sabbatical and kind of start enjoying some time with one another, and then after that time, we'll reengage with the community, just not sure how. So thank you very much, and thanks for letting me come and share this with you.
Thank you, Roger, for your service, for being here. Forty-five years ago, we didn't have quite the child labor law enforcement that we do today. That's why Roger was able to start when he was 10. Anyway, thank you. You've been a rock in this community, a very, very important, the Y has become a very important fixture here in Rapid City. Jason Solomon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to echo those sentiments, and I just, Roger, wanted to thank you for your service to the community. I thought it'd be really appropriate if we showed you a proper honor and send you off well, so thank you very much.
Next is the non-public hearing items, 2 through 65. There are no speaker, I'm sorry, I missed general public comment. For our general public comment, Alderman Pat Jones is going to introduce our speaker.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate this. It is a great pleasure for me to introduce to the audience here, to the council, and to those that are watching, Officer James Flynn. Officer Flynn is a new animal control officer with the Black Hills Humane Society. I bring him forward as one of my committee placements is representing the council on the Black Hills Humane Society Board, which is an honor to serve on. And with Officer Flynn being new, I wanted to invite him here tonight, have him introduce himself. One of the things that he is bringing forward that we're all excited about is he's wanting to be very proactive, be out, be visible, people know who he is and what goes on with animal control, not just respond to barking dog calls, but that there's going to be a lot of proactive things taking place in the community, and that's very exciting. So I invited Officer Flynn to come and talk tonight, so Officer Flynn, thank you for being here. Welcome to Rapid City and looking forward to hearing what you have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council, for having me. I am Senior Officer James Flynn with Animal Services and Enforcement. I am the new supervisor of the department. I've been the supervisor since February of 2021, so I'm pretty new at running the department. I oversee three staff members, which include two officers. I'm making some changes in the department. One of the changes that I'm making is I'm directing my department to be positive in the community relations area of our town. So I want to have more positive community engagement and relations in addition to just responding to calls for service and interacting with people that way. I'm looking to begin interaction with RCPD and public events to build community relations and trust within the community, which I feel is fundamental in a position like this. We have reached out to RCPD. We're going to be involved in K-9 for a day, so we're going to be taking dogs out that are eligible to be adopted, walking them downtown, interacting with the public, getting some trust built, some engagement that way. I am going to be making my staff be out in public speaking and interacting with members of the community outside of calls of service to humanize our position and our duties. I'm looking for events for Animal Services and Enforcement to be involved in within the community, so if anyone knows anything, they can reach out to us. Like, we'll speak at schools, we'll go to family events, just to be present there. So if anyone has anything, they can reach out to us anytime, and we will be more than happy to be involved. I'm looking to improve the working relationship with law enforcement, which includes Rapid City Police Department, Pangton County Sheriff's Office, and surrounding jurisdictions of our area. My long-term goal for Animal Services and Enforcement as the supervisor is, like I said, give the department a positive image in the eyes of the community and in the eyes of law enforcement, and to ultimately earn the trust of the community. Nowadays, it's kind of hard to trust. A lot of people don't trust this field, which I feel we need to make a difference and change. We're there for you. We're not there to just give you a warning or write you a ticket or be the bad guy. I'm going to be training my staff to have better communication with the people of the community and to do their job in other ways than, like I said, just issuing warnings and tickets and responding to calls. I want to be a positive influence and role model in the community. I'm looking to improve Animal Services and Enforcement's image, both internally and in the eyes of the community professionally. That means uniforms, stuff like that. We're going to be more professional, just look in the part. And like I said, if anyone would like Animal Services and Enforcement to be involved in any event or has any questions about anything, you can feel free to contact my department at 605-394-4132, and you can contact us anytime, and we'll be more than welcome, more than willing to help you out with anything. That's all.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now on to non-public hearing items, 2 through 65. There are no speaker requests on items 2 through 53, so we won't have a public comment period on those. Consent items are 2 through 53. At this point, the council may approve all or any of these items with one vote, or they may hold some back for separate consideration. If there be any items needing to be pulled off consent calendar. Darla Drew.
Thank you. I just would like to make a comment. So when you guys see us go through this and say yes to these, we had a three-hour meeting last Wednesday where we looked at all these issues very carefully, so it's not like we're just rubber-stamping everything. We've kind of gone through this before. I just felt it was necessary to explain that. Thank you.
Okay, so would there be a motion on consent?
Motion approved.
53. Motion by Armstrong to approve 2 through 53 and a second by Richie Nordstrom. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Takes us down to non-consent items, items 54 through 65. We'll open public comment on these items, and we have a few speaker requests on item number 60, starting with Tom Weaver. And all the speakers tonight, just so you know, you get three minutes to address the council. See the lights over here, they're just like traffic lights, so you can see how you're doing on time.
Well, first of all, I just wanted to say thank you again. I know this has been quite a journey the last few years, and we're kind of at the finishing steps, and before us, I apologize if some of you haven't had a chance to come by the stadium and actually get a tour yet. I know we've tried to reach out to many of you and try to get you out there, at least have comments, so if it works out in the next few weeks, however, the vote might go tonight, we'd love to have you out there to see how that's coming along. It's coming along quite nice. Before us, as you can see, there's a lot of support here tonight, and I just want to, again, say thank you for everything that we've gotten so far from the city. This is going to be quite a renovation, no matter how it turns out. We do have a plan to not only cover the $400,000 that we were tasked last year to raise in funding for our turf, as well as some of the value engineering items that we had to take out of that project, those amenities that we quite frankly don't have right now to just make the $5 million work, and I know Councilman Jones, we talked about, an umpire shack, and I can assure you, that's one of our things that we really want to get added back into this project as soon as we can get some cash flow streams going forward. Sweet, that's sweet, yes, yes. Also, you know, I know that the coaches would love to have, one thing that we don't have in there right now are some batting cages, and it's really hard to have a facility that's really world-class, and it really will be, considering we're going to host the Central Plains Regionals and all the state champions from the surrounding states the next couple of years. That probably won't be quite as much, but we already have plans in place to do that, as well as, I just want to point out that part of what the discussion that could happen tonight is about, we're trying to maintain the history, we're co-branding the stadium and, as well as the turf, that we're going to honor those that came before us, Dave Plouffe, and that's very important for everybody to hear in this forum, but also to maintain the Fitzgerald name, and I really think I wouldn't be doing anybody any justice if I didn't introduce Mr. Ed Fitzgerald. If you would at least wave to everybody. He's been a fantastic supporter of us. He's came to the Parks and Recs meeting, and he's volunteered that, you know, that we're probably making a bigger deal out of his name, but I don't think any of us really feel that way. We really feel that we're here because of what his father did, and as well as he's got a baseball family, I got to hear about his baseball family in the past, and I just want to say thank you for him to come, and if there's any questions I might be able to answer, please let me know.
Okay, thank you. Next up is Bill May.
Thank you for having me. I'm just here from Black Hills Surgical Hospital. We're going to be making a donation of $350,000 over 10 years to the stadium, and just echo Tom's comments that it's very important for us to preserve the Fitzgerald name and to make sure that we don't do anything to diminish that and to honor that and to honor Coach Plouffe. So if anyone has any questions, happy to answer.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Next is Jack Kemp.
Good evening. Thank you for taking time to hear us. I wanted to thank Tom and many individuals that have been involved, including the city council, on designating funding for a Post 22 and Fitzgerald Stadium. Appreciate the time and effort everybody's put into it. I'm going to be real brief. Bill has covered it a little bit, as has Tom. I would just like to add to what was said, is the topic was discussed at the Parks and Rec meeting, and I think generally there was support for it, however, if you might be hearing from others, I think the only little bit of concern out there was, is the plan going to do something to jeopardize the history of Floyd Fitzgerald Stadium? And although pictures or signs were in preliminary forms, there was one above a building above Floyd Fitzgerald Stadium name, and I think there was maybe a little bit of concern that that could diminish the historical significance of Mr. Fitzgerald, and so we are exploring options to do a ground signage so it doesn't look like the stadium naming is trumping Mr. Fitzgerald. But again, I'm available for any comments, or I mean, any questions later in the discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Ed Fitzgerald.
I just want to say to the council that the Fitzgerald family took a great deal of pride in Floyd Fitzgerald's contribution to baseball in this community. He was born into a family of players, fans, and was instrumental in the formation of Black Hills Sports, but his devotion to that field probably was best illustrated by the '72 flood. When the water had subsided, all the fences were completely collapsed, there was silt all over the outfield and infield, and there was trout swimming around in the dugout. Now, with the help of a whole lot of volunteers from the community and equipment from the Parks Department, that field was put together again, and we had baseball in July, so that's it.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Bill Keslov.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city councilman. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm here representing historic Rapid City, and I just want to briefly say I had some wonderful communications about the signage and the honoring of Floyd Fitzgerald with Black Hills Surgical Center, and also Mr. Weaver, which I truly, truly appreciate that communication, because I think it's going to bridge a lot of concerns that we have dialogued in the past. But many of you don't know maybe the history of the stadium. I mean, last year, it celebrated its 63rd birthday. It's been around a long time. And Floyd Fitzgerald had a real task in 1956. He had to gather a baseball team, he had to go out and fundraise, and he was able to go to Rapid City and get permission to build that field and that stadium, and he only had six months to do it. And so that's the reason that stadium was originally named Sue Park Stadium. And so anyway, in 1957, he was able to fundraise, gather all the funds, and get all that done. I mean, he was a real baseball fan, he was a real supporter of the youth of this community. And it's my belief that we should continue to honor that name of Floyd Fitzgerald for all that he contributed, much like we're honoring Coach Dave Plouffe in the 47 years that he coached and the 2,483 victories that Dave had. And Dave was a dear friend of mine, and so was Patty. But I think, if I may say, I think that a decision tonight would be premature, and here are the reasons why. Jack alluded to one, we don't have signage designed and the location for the new signage. Two, it'll give you a chance to review the guidelines for naming and renaming a facility that was established in, at 2013 by this city council, and it talks about commercialization and so on and so forth. And so I think we need to take the time to review those. The other reason I think it's premature to make a decision tonight is because typically Parks and Rec has a five-year lease with each park. Now, there's a new lease being developed, for a 10-year lease, which is brand-new for Parks and Rec to do, and Jeff, you correct me if I'm wrong, anything I say here, but anyway, the 10-year lease is to coincide with the 10-year sponsorship by Black Hills Surgical, Orthopedic Spine, and Midco. But I'd just like to say I'm really encouraged. I support the renovation, I supported Vision Funds, but I really support maintaining the only history we have left of that stadium, and that's the name of Floyd Fitzgerald Stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. And that'll bring it into the public comment period on these items, and back to the agenda under ordinances, item 54. Second reading of ordinance number 6480, an ordinance to clarify provisions related to the Rapid City Regional Airport Board and to expand its membership by amending provisions in Chapter 2.72 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Motion approved by Drew. Second by Nordstrom. All in favor of, okay, Pat Jones.
Even though, thank you, Mayor, even though it's about the 12th time, would you clarify exactly what we're voting on? Is it both elements of it, the change of the board members as well as the fire department element of it? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Both elements, and this is the second vote of that ordinance change, correct?
Yes, it is. Second reading, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion is for approval. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
Roberts. Strowman. Armstrong. Jones.
Aye.
Lehman.
Aye.
Solomon. Evans. Drew.
Aye.
Nordstrom.
Aye.
Motion carries 6 to 4.
Okay, thank you. Item 55, second reading of ordinance 6478 regarding supplemental appropriation number one for 2021. Motion approval by Jones. Second by Lehman. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 56, second reading ordinance 6479, an ordinance to amend provisions in Rapid City Municipal Code, Chapter 2.40, to authorize the finance officer to perform the duties of the finance director. Motion to approve by Drew, second by Solomon. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 57, first reading ordinance 6481, an ordinance amending Section 17.06 of Chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, a request by Ferber Engineering Company for Hayland LLC for rezoning request from Light Industrial District to General Commercial District for generally, for property generally described as being located south of Seager Drive at the end of 143rd Avenue. Motion to approve, Lehman. Second by Drew. All in favor of approval of item 57, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Ron Wyfenbach?
This is for the next item.
Okay. Item 58, under Working Session Committee Items, appeal by Jesse Herrera of an exception request denial to allow a second residential driveway approach on a collector street. We'll go to Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd make a motion to approve the exception.
Of an exception request denial. Okay, so the motion then is to approve the exception request on the second driveway, correct? And we had a second by, oh, John Roberts. And let's go to Dale Tekken here.
Just for clarification, I think the motion you're looking for is to approve the appeal.
Okay, duly noted. Okay, we have a motion on the floor then to approve the appeal of, on item 58. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with one no from Darla Drew. Item 59, authorize One Heart to demolish 230 Quincy Street. Motion to approve by Solomon and a second over here by Roberts. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 60, authorize mayor and finance director to sign various sponsorship and naming agreements regarding Fitzgerald Stadium. Pardon me? Motion to approve by Lehman and a second by Roberts. Again, we'll go to Jason Solomon.
Thank you. I was just going to pipe in and make the motion, but I don't need to, but I would just say I do respect the historical aspect of this, so, Mr. Keslov, I do appreciate your words. I think the program, as well as the sponsors, have done a good job of making sure that they honor the past, which I think is important while we look to the future, and I think we see the future right out here in these fine young people, and I appreciate the program, and so strongly support that and urge the council to do as well. Thank you.
Pat Jones.
Thank you very much, Mayor. A small reference was made to my interest in the Umpire Shack slash Umpire Suite. I will, I just want to underscore the importance of that facility because umpires are a vital part of the game during tournament time and other events. When the umpires are there working all day, just like the players are, there needs to be a safe place for the umpires to be to change- to be, to change clothes, to cool off, to get a break from the action, and as much as a world-class facility this is going to be, and I'm very confident it's going to be, taking good care of the umpires matters as well. I am a former sports official, and 30-some years, 33 years of officiating anything that had a ball attached to it, a lot of different shapes, too. So I understand the importance of that, and I just encourage the committee, and I know they will, I have every confidence that they're going to see this through, I just encourage them to make sure that they do, if there's some sponsorship out there that would like to come forward, to be part of it for the Umpire Suite, I encourage you to do so because it's a very important part of what's going to take place here, and we want to make sure we take just as good of care of, as of our umpires who will travel great distances to work here, as will our teams, and so I just want to make sure that that stays on the front burner. Thank you.
Darla Drew.
Thank you, I just want to say that I do support this, and congratulations to everyone involved in this project throughout the years, and the fundraising that was done to make sure that this project could go forward. My only concern for the future is that girls, women, and the public are allowed to use the facility when requested, and when it's appropriate. So I would really like to see those kinds of initiatives brought forward along with the regular boys' teams that we've seen, young men that we've seen play there over the years. Thank you.
Ron Wyfenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm trying to figure out how they're going to win so many games without an umpire suite. Some of these umpires aren't going to be very happy changing in that shack that's in there. I had a chance to actually tour the field, it's an awesome field. Mr. Kessloff, I appreciate your thoughts on the historical, I know that sometimes without you, things may just get bulldozed, and I appreciate that, I want to let you know that, but today, I'm in full confidence that they're doing this right, they're going to, they're going to keep the spirit of the Fitzgerald Stadium, they've, they're honoring Mr. Plouffe, they're working on getting a Hall of Fame to actually honor some of the kids that came out of there that are young men now, adults, and even older guys now that are, that played baseball in Rapid City. Baseball's been part of Rapid City, I mean, Post 22's been part of Rapid City, I believe these guys are doing it right, and Alderman Drew's concerns is, I believe that from the conversations I had with Black Hills Sports, is that they're going to look at opportunities other than just using it for baseball, it's a beautiful setting, it's a beautiful stadium. I think they're even trying to book Didi and the Feroz out there, I'm not, if they're still playing, I'm not sure, but. They could have grand opening in the umpires. So I just appreciate all the hard work they're done, and I appreciate the people that stepped up at the sponsors, that's a lot of money, you know, when you talk 350 grand for 10 years, that's a big commitment, I understand why they need those leases for 10 years to make that work, so that there's not an interruption in that, so, and I appreciate everybody's hard work, and we look forward to working with you guys in the future, so, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor for approval of item 60, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. Item 61, introduction and acknowledgement of the strategic housing plan draft. Darla Drew says move to acknowledge, and a second by Laura Armstrong. Go to Jason Solomon.
Mr. Mayor, for clarification's sake, by acknowledging the draft, we are not taking any action, so if we have any issue with it, we aren't proceeding with plans based on our acknowledgement.
Yes, it's a, it's a draft, you get a chance to approve the final report. But we'll go to Vicki Fisher.
Mr. Mayor, and we did listen at working session, some of your comments, in particular about the rental registration and inspections.
Yeah.
And the team will be looking at that closely as we are bringing forward the more final version of this, and looking out, looking at how we can potentially beef up what the city can do, taking our own initiative, realizing that less than 5% of these rental units have issue, and we don't want to penalize the 95% that are doing it right.
And that, and Vicki understands the point exactly, the, I do want to note, you have done a tremendous job with this, and many of the things in there I do agree with, and think that it's worth pursuing. I think number three and number four, which had to do with the registration inspections that had issue, what I didn't want was we said, well, you guys approved or acknowledged this plan, so we took off running in a direction, and maybe wasted everybody's time if it wasn't going to fly here, so I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that we're acknowledging the plan exists, but we aren't approving any of the aspects of it just now. So, it sounds like that's the case. Thank you, thank you, Vicki.
Ron Wyfenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to make a comment that kind of piggybacks from Mr. Solomon's comment, and I've had conversations with people that are involved in some of the substandard process that we have now, and I don't think we should throw that away, I think that should continue to be in the conversation, we can continue to make that better and make it work, because it's, it seems to work okay, they're just, somewhere along the line, it's getting lost towards the end of the process, I think we can make that work, so I just wanted to put that in there, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, appreciate those comments, too, substandard housing is an issue to keep in the front of our mind as we go forward. So the motion on the floor is to acknowledge this report, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, before we move on to community development items, we're going to go to Alderman Bill Evans for appointed personal privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to take a moment to acknowledge this beautifully worded proclamation you have for the dark skies week, that's a worldwide movement to try and recapture the magic of the night sky, and I don't know whether I was going to have you read it to all these people, but most of them left, so maybe people need to read it, but it's a beautifully crafted thing, bringing out the reason, in particular, the experience of standing beneath a starry sky, inspires feelings of wonder and awe, encourages a growing interest in science and nature, especially among young people, and that is really true, and those of us who travel a lot, and have relatives back east, understand that the minute you cross the Mississippi River, you don't see stars anymore, and it doesn't matter what, where you are, in, on a farm in Illinois, or, you know, in Everglades, they're gone. You might see a few really bright ones, but pretty much, we've got a huge percentage of the population that is growing up with never seeing the wonder of nature, and that is an asset we have here in this town, it is important we preserve it, that's the reason Darla and I have been particularly obsessed with this over the last couple of years, and we're going to continue to be so, and I think people are becoming more and more willing to look toward a dark skies compliance sort of behavior among the population, because when they see the advantages it brings, there are no disadvantages, it's all good. I'm pleased to report, I've been working with some people at Black Hills Energy to try and find dark skies compatible street lamps, I know there's going to be a relamping process going on for the next five years, and that could result not only in the savings of millions of dollars, but also the saving of the environment, and every year there seems to be more and more data that is acquired, proving the importance of this. Now, my phone goes into a dark mode, so does my Apple computer, I think the HP computers, the Android ones, they're all starting to do it now, too. People are realizing that this matters, because, you know, millions of years of evolution don't go away all of a sudden because we invented a bright LED, and the fact is, our eyes do change from, you know, cones to rods and everything, and they adjust to different lighting we have, and you actually see better with less light if it's the right color. So I want to thank the mayor for this beautifully worded resolution, I note that the night lights are supposed to be going out in downtown area for a few hours, tonight or all week? Just tonight?
I think it's all week.
Well, that'll be cool, and it's my hope that we move toward a system of lighting where we can control that as a system, and the lighting controls that I've been bellyaching about frankly for the last 18 months, would allow us that flexibility, and hopefully even the ability to adjust lighting on the fly, as people realize we really don't need that much, and we can keep dimming it, and saving more and more money, and see more and more stars all the time. So I want to thank you, Mayor, for this really wonderful proclamation, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Now, under community development items, item 62, a request by Ferber Engineering Company for Brad and Sandra Estes for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots A and B of Track Four of the northwest corridor, generally described as being located northeast of the Sheridan Lake, of Sheridan Lake Road and Norseman Lane intersection, and the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Okay, we have a motion from Richie Nordstrom to approve with stipulations.
Second.
Second by Ron Wyfenbach.
Quick, quick point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
If we could get the applicant's name to be Brett instead of Brad, I think Sandra would like to know that we got her correct husband's name on that. Our error, we do apologize. Thank you.
Oh. Okay, for the record, Brad is not married to Sandra Estes, it is Brett. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay, if you still want to vote on that, the motion is to approve with stipulations. All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 63, a request by Renner Associates LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lot 1A and 1B of southwest corridor of the northwest corridor, generally described as being located east of Old Folsom Road, and again, the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Motion by Lehman, and a second by Greg Strowman. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 64, request by KTM Design Solutions for DTH LLC for a preliminary subdivision plan for proposed lots 19 through 26 of Block One, lots 9 through 14 of Block Two, of Rainbow Ridge subdivision, generally described as being located west of Bunker Drive at the current Sagewood Street terminus, and the recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Okay, so moved by Darla Drew, and a second by Lance Lehman. All in favor of approving item 64, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 65, approval of the FY21 Community Development Block Grant Annual Action Plan. Motion to approve by Armstrong.
Second.
Second by Nordstrom. All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. On to item 66, which is the bill list, and we'll go to Finance Director Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, there are no additions to the bill list that is attached, so the total remains at $13,301,742.80.
Motion approved by Solomon, second by Wyfenbach. Pat Jones?
Aye.
Okay, all in favor of approving the bill list, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pat Jones?
Thank you, Mayor, I should have probably got this in somewhere early, but I just wanted to make a comment about the Faith and Hope event that took place at the Civic Center a few days ago, I know Alderman, Solomon and I were attending, I'm not sure if any of the rest of us did, but it was an outstanding event at the Civic Center, the group that sponsors it, I think there were over 700 people there, and it was an incredibly positive, uplifting morning, appreciate the sponsorship of tickets, so a lot of people could attend, and it was just an excellent event, our Civic Center staff did a superb job, and what a great thing to see us getting back on track in the community, so, great, kudos to the people that sponsored that event, and hopefully it'll continue to be an annual event. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Someone made a motion to adjourn?
Pat Jones.
Pat Jones, second by Ron Wyfenbach. All in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you, everyone.